Our next docketed item, and I've just been informed that the homeowner is not here yet, or property owner for 16-034. So we will now, we'll move and do docket PZ 16035 and come back to 034.
Yes.
So, okay. Ms. Alvey, would you present the docket, please?
You want to read it?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, sorry. Get me out of line here. So, Ms. Fox.
Donquet PZ 16-035. Application has been filed by Chad Seedler for a record plat for property located at 309 Elm Avenue, Peewee Valley. The property is owned R1A residential.
All right.
All right. Good morning. Amy Alvey with the Oldham County Planning and Development Services. As Ms. Fox stated, this is an application for a rec-- I'm sorry, for a minor plat, and it is Chad Seedler and David and Teresa Sharon, because there is a minor line shift with the adjoining property owner, which is David and Teresa Sharon. So that's why they are listed on here as well. But, again, it is an application for a minor plat. The overall acreage between the two property owners is 4.551 acres, and it is zoned R1A residential. The property, this is an aerial view of the property that's in question. This is an old aerial. This house has since been removed, and you'll be able to see in a new picture and stuff, there has been a new home that was constructed closer to Elm Avenue. But this is the basic overlay, or outline of the lot here on Elm Avenue. This is an area view. And then this just shows everything in the surrounding area is zoned R1A residential. The site has not been the subject of any previous planning commission cases, so this is the first time the property has been brought forth to the planning commission. The applicant applied for a minor plat on October 25th of 2016 to shift property lines and create a 1.193 acre lot, and to have a residual lot of 1.232 acres. There are no road frontage requirements in the R1A district, only a minimum lot width of 150 feet. So, going to give you a little bit of history of how the property was originally, and how we ended up where we are today. This is the original tract of 7.87 acres. So in September of 2004, the original tract was divided into three equal tracts as part of an estate settlement. So you'll see there's tract one, tract two, and tract three. So the original seven acres were divided into three tracts. Then in March of 2006, tract two of the original pyramid estate was divided into two small parcels, was divided, and two small parcels were consolidated with adjacent properties. So the original, this tract here, was created into two separate lots, and then the rear portion, here and here, they were consolidated with the adjoining property owners in Maple Valley subdivision. So that gave a total of four tracts. So we went from one tract to three tracts, now we're at four tracts. In October of 2006, tract three of the original pyramid division was divided into two tracts. So this was the lower portion, the southern original division, so that was divided into two tracts. So this is what it looks, would be at this point. So at this point, we now have five tracts from the original seven-acre piece of property. Then in June of 2014, the two tracts that were created in March of 2006 were consolidated back into one tract. So we went from five tracts to four tracts. So this is where we're at, at this point. So now we're at four tracts. In July of 2015, a two-tenths of an acre tract from the original tract one was consolidated with tract three on this map. So this little section here was consolidated with this rear tract three here. So again, we're still at four tracts. The applicant applied for a minor plat on October 25th of 2016 to shift property lines and create a 1.193 acre tract. So this is the one tract that was consolidated back into one. They're wanting to create this purple tract here, and then take this property line and consolidate it, and then this was their original property line, and go with that one. So they're going to shift some property lines, which are equal amounts. They're 7.671 and 7.671 square footage, 7,671 square feet. So basically, it's kind of a land swap between the two, and they want to create this tract So if we do that, if they are allowed to create this tract here, then again, we are back at five tracts. At the time a building permit was issued for tract two, staff ran into addressing issues as there was not enough address points to accurately reflect the address location at the rear of the property, and the solution was to give the property at the rear a half address. So this property here originally has a 309 Elm Avenue address. So staff had to address this piece back here at 309 and a half. So now, we have 311, 309, 309 and a half, 303, 305, 307. We're out of address points at this point. So the applicant is requesting a division of the land in the same 309 address range, and staff felt due to the multiple divisions and addressing issues, the minor plat request should go before the planning commission, because of the numerous divisions from the original seven-acre tract, and then plus, we're getting into addressing issues as well. And that is all that I have. Oh, sorry. Take that back. I have pictures. Okay. This is the north view. This is across the street from Elm Avenue, the north view. This is the east view. This is where you can see the 309 and a half here, and this is going back out towards Maple Avenue in Peewee. This is the adjoining property owner, if you're at 309 to the left. That's highlighted here in the blue. This is 309 Elm Avenue. So the original house that was on 309 was removed, was demolished, and this is the new home. There was a building permit that was issued March 4th of 2016, so this is a new construction right here. This is the drive and access easement that goes back to the 309 and a half. So this is the 309 and a half. Again, if you look at the bottom corner of your screen, it's all the way at the rear of that property there. And again, this is just 309 and a half. This is the area of the proposed lot. So 309 and a half is here, and then this is the access easement that takes you back out to Elm Avenue. So this is the area here of the proposed new lot location. This is just another view of the access easement that goes out to Elm Avenue. That's another view of the proposed lot area. Again, this is just 309 Elm Avenue. Just shows you that it is addressed 309. And then this is the access easement that goes back to 305 and 307 Elm Avenue. So again, in summary, the applicant is requesting to create a 1.193 acre lot in the 300-block range of Elm Avenue. And that is all that I have. We have an answer.
Ms. Alvey, before we open it up for questions, I'd like to call on Mr. Matt Toller, if you would, to come up, and I'll get you sworn in. And then he is the GIS manager, and also handles the 911 addressing for the county. So let's get you sworn in, if we could.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Just wanted to kind of get, you know, your take on this, and about the addressing, and the 309 and a half, and, you know, just kind of--
From a public safety standpoint, having another address here would just be, it would just be too confusing for emergency responders to be able to respond appropriately in this kind of area. I mean, we make every reservation that we can to facilitate people with not having to change their addresses, or to give addresses. That's why we gave the half, because it was sort of the only other way to do that. But for here, from a dispatching standpoint, we can't give it a 309A, or a B, or a three-quarter address, or a quarter address, because the CAD system just physically cannot handle those kinds of things. It has to just be a whole number. I mean, we do have some halves, but we try not to have that be a policy, that we just give out half addresses unless we absolutely have to. And since this is like a neighborhood area, and Elm Street's a pretty old, or Elm Avenue's a pretty old street, you know, usually they're piano-type key, you know, numbers where it's just all the way up the thing. So this is sort of an odd situation of having a seven-acre, in a, like, you know, a highly residential area.
And there's not, you can't, like, do a five-digit number, or a four-digit number, or--
I mean, because if we, like, we'll just be out of range. I can't, there's no other numbers going up. I mean, the only other solution would be to say, everybody up the street to the next road, everybody has to change their address to facilitate what they want to do here. And then most likely, if that's the case, I'd get rid of that 309 and a half. And then everybody else up the block would have to be the next sequential number to make sense.
All right. Mr. Urban?
Well, and what I wanted to add in the record here is that when a minor plat comes to the staff, the minor plat goes out to all agencies and utilities responsible for providing services. 911 addressing is one of those agencies. And so we get back, either changes, comments, or no comments, and then that's how a minor plat moves through, just on a staff level. This one obviously had an issue with 911 addressing. So Matt couldn't write a letter that says, "Oh yeah, we can give it an address." We could have simply denied the minor plat, but we thought, all right, if the planning commission, for some reason, found some wisdom in approving this. But the difficulty is, Ms. Albertson, that there is, it's an, how do you make an address? You can't, Matt told you, you can't put an A or B. We already have a half, and there's no other number in the address. So we thought at least coming in the planning commission, rather than at just a staff level.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Let's open it up for questions now, from the commission to staff. Yes, sir. Mr. Douglas?
Amy.
Yes, sir.
Is there a house on 309?
Yes, sir.
Where's that house located?
It is, whoops, it is that house here. It is approximately in this area here.
Okay. And then, is there a house on 309 and a half?
Yes. About right here.
And what are those two existing structures? Are they gone?
They're gone. Yes. This, I tried to keep the overall survey to keep it accurate. But yes, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Additional questions? Mr. Klinkfus.
How did they get the minor plat on, in 2006?
I was not employed with Planning Development Services at that point in 2006.
I'm referring to, it's less than five years when they did the original split.
I'm not sure.
What was your question? Bob, I missed that, sir.
Well, I noticed, I noticed they did a split in 2004, and then they came back and did, they divided the tract that was split in 2004 a second time, two years later.
Right. I'm not sure if that, our current regulation only says you can create three, you can have three tracts from a parent tract within five years. So you would have the parent tract plus two. I'm not sure at the time in 2006 if that was the regulation at that point. I'm not sure. But it was signed by the administrator at that time. It's cut off, but--
Staff level, it wasn't the administrator.
Right. At that time.
Thank you.
So I'm not sure if that was the rule at the time.
Okay. Additional questions for staff? Okay. Oh, yes, sir. Ms. Finney?
This is a little confusing, so I'm not sure how, the, what is on this paper is Lot B, which is the lot, I think, in question? Okay. Will that have a separate driveway from Lot C?
That would be a question for the applicant.
Okay.
If they do want a separate driveway, I did send it out to all the agencies, that is a Peewee Valley street, and their engineer would have to approve, the city engineer, which is Mel Milburn, would have to approve the encroachment. So I'm not sure if they plan on using this access easement to get to the property, or they'll have a separate drive, but you'll have, that would be a question for the applicant.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any additional questions for staff? All right. Seeing none, we'll move into testimony and questioning by those, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, presentation of the applicant, or representative and others in support of the application. Get everybody sworn in here. Would you stand up? Uh-huh. And we'll get your name and addresses for the record. Ms. Fox?
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. And we just need whoever's going to speak first, we'll get the name and address.
My name is Morris Talbot, 319 Tucker Station Road, Louisville, Kentucky, 40243. Amy did a real good job explaining all of this, and I'm glad she did. I'm not sure I could either, but a couple of comments. Mr. Seedler's here today. Chad lives at the old lot there, Lot A, is shown on this plat. He actually tore down the old pyramid house and built a new house, which shows correctly at this location. And part of the applicant, the other part of the applicant is Mr. Sharon. I'm not sure if he's here today or not, but Mr. Sharon is applicant because of the land swap that they're doing, to kind of square up each of the properties. I think if we're granted the approval of Lot B, Chad, you can maybe answer this, but I assume that there's going to be a separate driveway.
That's correct.
Let me get your name and address.
Chad Seedler, 309 Elm Avenue, Peewee Valley, 40056. And yes, we left the flag lot like that for its own separate driveway.
I know there's been a lot of divisions and reconsolidations and so forth on this piece of property. And I think, and I'm trying to remember if the five-acre rule that Mr. Klinkfus brought up was in effect at that time or not. I don't remember quite back then. I've slept a few times since then. But anyway, the, one of the things we wanted to bring up to date as well is, Mr. Seedler has--
Mr. Seedler?
I'm sorry. Mr. Seedler has had a soil analysis done by the health department on this site. And as you can see, one of the, in the eight items that they check, all of the items were satisfactory. The only thing that's not satisfactory is provisionally suitable in item, I guess that's item nine, and that's the only reason it's provisionally suitable, is because there's no building plan, we're not quite to that point. So once, once the building plan is submitted, the number of bedrooms and so forth, then I expect that to be suitable as well, including, including number eight, which indicates that there's 100% of the repair area that's suitable on this site. So this part looks good. As far as the addressing, you know, that's an issue with 911 and the county. I can't really comment on that. You know, we're hopeful that we can work out something on the addressing, but we'll have to leave that up to those folks. That's really all I have to say. I'll try to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. We'll have the opportunity to do that here just shortly, but does that complete your application, then?
Yes, it does.
Okay. All right. Let's move into now the, well, let me ask if there's anyone here that would like to support in, in support of the application. Is there anyone here to speak in support of? Okay. Anybody here that has testimony or question opposing the application? Okay. Don't see anyone. We'll now open it up for questioning of the applicant, and those opposing the application by the commission. And Mr. Toller, if you would, come back up just a minute. I had one question before we get started here. If the commission saw fit to approve this request today, how would the address, addressing be handled as far as 911 is concerned?
The only solution I could think of would be to readdress the rest of the block. Because if I was to tell dispatch, "We have a quarter address," it would, it would bomb out, and they would, 911 would physically not recognize that address as being valid.
So in your opinion, the only option would be to readdress the whole, that whole area? The 300--
Well, from anywhere here north--
Yeah.
--to wherever that street is. So if it's three addresses, or six addresses, or however many it goes to that, I don't know what the, what road that intersects, but that's what would have to happen, and we would just have to send out a letter and be like, "Due to this, you know, your address has to change, and you have X amount of days to make that happen."
And if that were to happen, would it go to a four-digit, or how would that be--
Well, everybody's address would just go sequentially up. So there'd be 309, this B lot would be 311.
Okay.
The next one would be 313, and then subsequently up the street. So however many individuals that, that affects, I don't know offhand, but there's got to be a half a dozen.
Okay. All right. Mr. King?
So under that scenario, continuing that thought, someone five doors down might inherit the address that used to belong to this property?
Well, no, they--
It'd be more like their neighbor, you know? If it's only pushing one, one or two lots forward, but, but the bottom line is, they have to change all of their information.
And that party would have to go to everyone with whom they correspond, and have deliveries, and whatever, and have all of that information updated.
Correct.
And usually the post office, they'll, they'll hold an address for a year as an alias, but that's more for carriers. And you can't really suite it, because suite numbers are reserved just for postal delivery, so that the mail gets parsed out. So if you had an apartment, like, if you had a strip mall, usually they have like one major box. Because the post carriers, they do it here, but they're really not supposed to. Like in Louisville, post carriers, they will not go in every single suite in a strip mall. There has to be a main box for that. But that's the only reason why that is. That has nothing to do with 911. That's strictly for mail.
Anything else, Mr. King? Ms. Alvey?
Is there any such thing as an address, and then the building next to it, annex? Can that be--
From, 911 requires whole numbers. So you can't have an alphanumeric thing. You can't have like 105A, or, you know, I mean, we sort of skirted it with the half at the time, just because that was, we didn't foresee that there'd be, you know, another division, which would cause an even greater problem. But in this case, I mean, I wouldn't feel comfortable with the liability that I carry to address the county, to give that a quarter address. I would want to have the rest of the street readdressed correctly, so that we could, you know, I mean, there's a lot of addressing issues in the county. But to like just make a reservation for this, to make it even more bad, is not good practice.
So if I understand, if this was approved, your only option right now is to get people to change addresses--
That's what I would, that's what I would prefer to be done.
--of the road. Which would definitely be a inconvenience--
It would be an inconvenience for everybody up the street.
--to have to change their stationery, and that'd be a mess. Okay.
Okay. Is that all, Ms. Alvey? Okay. Ms. Albertson, and then Mr. Douglas.
Would it be possible to go backwards and make it 307 and a half?
Well, it'd be out of range, because we have 307, and 309, and 307 and a half, if they want to do another driveway. So if you were driving up the street--
Yeah.
--you'd come to 307 and be like, "Then I got 309, so I've missed 307 and a half."
Right. But that wouldn't inconvenience an expense for so many other--
Correct. But we're just compounding a problem that we have with another problem. And, you know, I sort of made an executive decision to give them a half address, even though I don't prefer to ever give those.
Yeah.
Only the most rare case where there is no other option, will I do that? But in this case, it's, you know, like, I'm not going to give it a quarter address. Everyone would have to change their stuff.
Not, not a possibility of 307 and a half. I understand it would be out of sync, but--
Yeah. I mean, that would be even worse than just having a 30--
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Douglas? What would be the objection if we had a homeowner, or a landowner, and with planning and zoning, making that a private road, and giving it its own name, with its own address? What would be the difference of that when a developer comes in and says, "I'm going to put in a development, and I'm going to put in a private road, and it's just, it's a private road, and they give it a name?" What is the classification in the county and staffing that we can do that?
From my understanding, it has to be the same access easement that everybody uses. Now there's going to be three driveways, so it would not ever be a private road.
What if--
These are, these are driveways, not roads. Because, again, Amy did a great job colorizing this. Five parcels are being proposed out of one. Instead of it coming in as a subdivision and doing that originally, these kind of minor plats and consolidations are creating this, this issue, and we don't typically have a street name just for one or two driveways. You can have up to three driveways off one roadway, but we don't create a new name of a road for one parcel.
Is that in writing, or is that just something in staff that we do?
I've never, I've never heard of somebody just naming their driveway a road, because--
Well, I mean, if, if somebody had bought 200 acres and decided they wanted to name their road Smith Road, or Smith Lane, or--
Well, that's a much different situation than, than this.
If it's a private road.
Well, and if there's only one house on that 200 acres, it would not be given a name. We have a situation like that in the county where--
We do.
--it's on a map, and people drive down it thinking they, it's a county road, and they end up at somebody's house, and they have to turn around and go back.
Right.
And that's really compounding this whole issue of addressing and 911 management. It really is not a good practice.
Yeah. We have standards for private roads. Private roads are supposed to be built to county standards--
Right.
--even though they become private. There's, you know, and there's a whole section on it that talks about maintenance responsibilities. The maximum number of parcels, obviously, cannot exceed 20 if it's a private road. They can only serve the parcel that fronts on or gains their access from, and each individual parcel shall be a minimum of two acres in area. So they don't meet that standard as well. So we kind of looked at that a little bit in-house as well.
Okay. Is that all, Mr. Douglas? Okay. Mr. King, and then Ms. Bonnet.
Mr. Chairman, so, non-sequential numbers. So we blow those five open to four-digit numbering in that range. I understand that it's not necessarily intuitive, but is that something that's in the mix?
I wouldn't feel comfortable, as the address administrator, to have it be a 300-block, and then all the way ju, just jump to a thousand range, or, let's say, 500, whatever the, you know, whatever it ends at, and then continue with 300. Because when dispatch gets dispatched, you know, they need to be able to find this place, not be like, "I'm looking for a 300-block," and then all of a sudden, for 100 feet, there's five, 500 numbers, and then back to 300. Or for the-- and then back to 300. Or for the post office or FedEx or anything like that, it becomes chaotic for a lot of individuals.
Okay. All right. And Ms. Bonnet?
What is across the street? What occupies the even numbers in that sequence? Is it...
I think that it is sequential there. I think that it's like 308, 306.
But there are residences across there? It's not like railroad tracks or any non-usable?
No.
Because what kind of issue is this going to cause? Let's say it's approved and you, and everybody shifts their addresses up, like you said.
Well, it'd only be on this side of the street that would be changed.
Right. That's what I'm saying. So now all of a sudden is 308 directly across from 301. I mean, normally you kind of expect it to zigzag across, but if you're-
And I think that it would. I, I think that those numbers, you're only changing it by a half. So like it'd be from 309 to 311 to 313. So, I mean, I can't remember what the plat was, but those are just like 30-foot, you know, widths of those driveways. So you're only dealing with 60 feet. So if you had, you know, two addresses and 12 was even 50 feet ahead, you'd still be sequentially moving. Because this is a highly, I mean, it's like downtown Peewee, you know, it's like-
So here is, and you can see on our GIS, because our GIS doesn't go out to decimal points, this is 309 and a half, but on our mapping it shows 310. So you're looking at...
Where's the real 310?
The real 310 is across the street, which is right here.
See, that's part of the problem is, you know, it only recognizes whole numbers because you're not supposed to have a half address.
Yeah. So there's, there would be three parcels that would be affected, 311, 315, and 317 that have Elm Avenue addresses. This has a Maple address, this next parcel here, and this parcel has a Maple address. So that kind of gives you an overlook of the addresses in the area.
Mr. Tolliver, on the, so let me, excuse me for interrupting here, Ms. Bonnet, but so if you, if dispatch, if, if somebody was having a heart attack at 310, they're on that side on, over here, and they dispatched, but then there's another 310 over here, doesn't that-
No, this is just a graphic.
Okay. So if it was dispatched, it wouldn't show this, this?
Yeah. Like if you, if you look at that, I mean, see how it says address 309 and a half?
Okay.
Just graphically speaking, this, that field in the database is not a, a decimal field. It's, it's, it's a whole number in the database. That's why I can, I can type it in like this alphanumeric field, but dispatch has this information. So when they get dispatched, they use my points and that's how they get dispatched. Even, and there is even a mailbox that says 309 and a half out there.
Go ahead, Ms. Bonnet.
I'm just trying to cover all options. Since 313 has not been utilized and the home on 311 appears to be in a position to where that lot couldn't be easily subdivided, could you not make 309 and a half, turn that into 311 and make 311, 313 and be done? So it would only really affect?
Well, you're still-
We're still missing one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Use of even numbers.
Even numbers across the street.
Well, the utility companies won't, won't allow that to happen. I'll get big, huge pushback from LG&E and KU because the, they won't put a meter on the wrong side of the street. Because we've run into that problem too over by like the vet clinic down in Crestwood, near Crestwood Station. When they put that CrossFit thing in there, those addresses are all crazy too. And we gave it a, an even number on that road going down and they just, the electric company wouldn't put a meter out there.
We're, we're really trying to force fit something here.
I have a question.
Okay. I'll wait just a minute, Mr. Douglas, and then Ms. Smith, I saw you and then I'll get Mr. Douglas.
Matt, does it recognize ABC?
No, you can't have alphanumeric.
Because there's one down from me and I, I didn't know whether that was-
Well, from like the, from the CAD standard, no, they, they don't have that.
Need people to get EMS there.
Right. Okay. Mr. Douglas?
So 313 is not being used?
From what this says, no. But if we use 313 for this, it would still be out of range. You'd go from 309 to 313 to 309 and a half to 315.
But we're kind of out of range for 311 to 315. Somebody made a error somewhere.
Well, out of range means that the numbers go up and then back down and then back up again.
And this is two lots. This is lot 18A and 18B. So that's probably where that other 313 comes into play.
Yeah.
That's the parcel ID is 18A and 18B. So 18A is probably 311, 18B is probably 313. That's why.
But for postal, it's only one?
Correct. It is, it currently is just one lot.
Right. I understand that. Okay.
All right. Our time has expired here on our, our question. And if y'all still have some additional questions, we could, you know, add some time. But, you know, we've lost a lot of good questions here. But you all want to, are you done with, as far as our questions? Or do you want to add some time? Mr. Finney?
I guess this is to Jim. Where, where do we stand?
Let's say, yeah, add time. Five minutes? Is that adequate? Okay. If I get a motion to do, add five minutes to our time?
I move to add five minutes.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify with a same eye?
Aye.
All opposed? No. Okay. Mr. Finney?
Where do we stand legally on this as far as approval or denial? I mean, we've got, we've definitely had a problem with 911. And it, and it is a legitimate problem. We also have a issue with a person with a piece of property that meets building standards. In other words, it's far putting on a septic system and this kind of thing. And, and it meets lot standard, I guess you'd say, for the county zoning and everything. One way or the other, we're denying somebody something. And I don't know, you know, I mean, that's...
Well, you know, again, I explained when we get a minor plat and we send it out to agencies and utilities and addressing is one of those agencies we send it to. There's a problem with addressing. If, if LG&E said they couldn't serve it, then how do we approve it? If, if the health department said it doesn't have septic, we couldn't approve it. So a same agency, again, an agency is telling you, there's a problem. And you use the word legally, so I'm not going to practice law because there's an attorney sitting right next to me. And, and you can ask him legally where we are. My, my planning opinion though is that, you know, this is a subdivision of a parcel for yet again, the fourth or fifth time. And is it, you know, that it's been divided too many times? I mean, that, there's a pattern and a rhythm down Elm Street. And, you know, this is an individual who wants to get yet another lot in on this parcel. Is that appropriate or not? That's up, that's up to you all. So that's kind of two questions. One, is, is it even an appropriate division of land, given that it's been divided several times here? And then if it is, if you think it's an appropriate division of the land, then, you know, how do you rectify this issue of the addressing? And if I live next door and I was told to change my address because my neighbor wants to do something, I may not be happy. You have to choose whether or not that's something that is, is a legitimate issue to subject an adjoining property owner who has no benefit from this approval. So...
Mr. Carter, let me ask you, could you respond to the legal side of this or legal issues that, that could be involved with this if it was approved?
Probably has never come up. CAD means computer-aided dispatch, which means you have a computer that generates the addresses throughout the county and the county has an ordinance that says that's the way we do it. Problem is, when you start dividing a piece of land that's between two addresses, the computer won't take decimal points. So we're bound by what the computer can, what addresses the computer can create that dispatch will be able to recognize and call up. There's not, I'm not sure that you can deny the petition to divide the property based on the fact that we can't put an address in the CAD system. If you were, if you wanted to deny it on that basis, you'd have to deny it under subsection C on the basis that the addressing system in Oldham County will not take an additional address for the piece of property that is being created and therefore would create a dangerous situation for the community. But the fact, or, I mean, that's probably the only basis you could use to do it legally.
Mr. Finney, is that the answer to your question, sir?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any additional questions for the applicant or staff? Yes, sir, Mr. Douglas?
Yeah, I just want to make sure we cover all bases here. You know, when, when Mr. Carter mentioned that when somebody has a piece of property and, you know, it has an address on it and then you want to subdivide it or whatever, it would seem to me to go with the same aspect that when somebody has a piece of property and the address is 301 something, whatever, and then somebody decides to build a multi-housing unit on it. The CAD system, I think, allows for separation for apartment units in that system, correct?
They do it by building.
They do it by building?
So there's a main building, 1,000 building, 2,000 building, 3,000 building. The, the units inside, once they get there-
But I believe on the CAD system, and it's been many years since I've been familiar with it, but it may say building one, but it's going to say unit number or apartment number so-and-so on there. That's how 911 figures out what apartment to go to.
Well, that's what, that's what you get when you get the call. But like if you typed in building one, apartment number seven, it's not, you know, if it's three floors, how does, how does the CAD know? How does the computer know what floor to go to? It's not going to put the point anywhere different on that building unless I physically had other points that said, this is building 1,000. And then I had a subset of all those other apartments to do that. But even still, on a three or four level building, you know, they don't know when they go and it says, is it one to 10? Is it 10 to one? You know, like they don't know which side it is. Some use letters. There's not really a standard in apartments are sort of different than a, a straight residential home.
Can I ask you one question? I'm sorry.
Sure.
Can, will a computer recognize an A and a B?
CAD won't.
CAD won't?
Not in, not in the number field. See, because the way the CAD works is there's a number field, the street name, the street suffix, drive, court, whatever, and then north or south. So it takes four or five fields for the CAD to actually do that.
Okay.
So, you know, because you get into misspellings and, and all those kinds of things. And when you're being dispatched, you know, minutes count. So these guys, back when their addressing originated before the computer, there's 1,000 addresses per mile. So if the fire truck turned on 53 and your address is 2563, two and a half miles up the road, they would know to start looking either odd. That's how they did it. They would reset the trip. Now, that really wasn't done in Oldham County. Just drive up 42. It's, it's a nightmare. But when you get into these residential things like this, it's difficult for anybody in my position to not run into issues like this because we never know what somebody's going to do. So I don't know, you know, back when it was seven acres, somebody just said, we're going to give it the next number, not realizing that maybe 20 years from now they're going to split it into five lots and run it all kinds of-
So in, in the county, in Oldham County, we, are you, are you the one that's putting in CAD the address? Or is it Kevin Unser's?
CAD uses all of my GIS stuff.
Okay. Have we and staff asked Kevin Unser with emergency management about the CAD system and, and what alternatives could there be? Have we done that?
Well, I work with Justin Powell, which is the person at dispatch who actually does all the CAD management. And we run into problems like this all the time. But the only solution in this case would be to change somebody's address.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We have run out of time again. And we've got, we're kind of limited today on our time because fiscal court meets at 2 o'clock this afternoon. So I would suggest that, you know, we, let's move on to final statement and, and then get staff and our attorney then to, to talk to us about what our options are on this, on this particular one. So, thank you, Mr. Tolliver. With that, do you all have a final statement that y'all would like to make? And Mr. Talbert?
The only thing I'd like to say is it's been a lot of, been somewhat enlightening on the addressing issue today. And we may be able to somehow work around this. I haven't thought it through. These, these comments are all new to me today. But we appreciate the commission's efforts to accommodate us. And whatever the outcome is, we, you know, if it's a negative outcome for us, we'll try to see if we can work out some issues and, and, and I hope this doesn't shut the door or we can't come back. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. With that, Doc at PZ 16035 is now closed. And I'll call on, as always, Mr. Urban and Mr. Carter to kind of outline what, what's being requested here and what our options are.
This is a, this is a request to consider a minor plat. You have, as always, in your staff report on page two, a motion to either approve or deny. You've heard all the discussion regarding not only whether the plat itself is approvable, but whether the addressing through an agency is appropriate or not. And I'm not sure what else to say.
Okay. Mr. Carter?
Uh, yes, sir.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. I don't have anything else.
Okay. You have any, okay. No more comments. Okay. All right. You have heard the staff's comments here. And now, it's Chair will open it up to the floor for consideration on the request for the record plat. Open it up for a motion, either approve or deny. Don't everybody speak at once? We need to, we need to do one or the other. So...
Can I ask a question?
Okay.
Is it appropriate at this time to ask a question?
Okay. We can address staff.
There's a lot of indecision, as you can tell. And I know it's up to a vote, but would the applicant consider postponing until he works the situation out with 911?
As, as Chairman, I would suggest if we go that route, that we table the motion, motion to table. And then that way they could come back at a, at a, a future date if the issue is addressable and can be worked out as far as the addresses are concerned. And then come back and we can do like we did this morning on the Walmart, move to remove it from the table and then consider it. So we don't have to go through the whole hearing again. It would probably be the cleanest way, would not, not, Mr. Carter?
Yes. So only, the only issue I have is that when we send the notices out, it's a notice for a division of this piece of property. None of the adjacent homeowners knew that if they didn't show up and this was approved, that they might get a change of address. And so if we table it, table it, what I would like to have an understanding with the petitioner is that he might go and talk to each one of those people and ask them if they would be willing to agree that, to, to go along with, with the understanding that their address may have to be changed.
And that's a good idea because then they may choose to come to the next meeting in either support or opposition if their address is changed.
The, you know, let me just follow up with that. For this hearing, notices didn't have to go out to the adjoining property owners or anything?
No, they did. All the adjoining property owners were notified.
Okay. But, but they didn't know about the particular issue of they might have to change their address, correct?
Right. Because that's not my decision to tell them that that's an option of what they're doing.
That's what I say. That's the problem. It's not a part of what we're doing. It's just happens to be a problem that's going to be created by the division of this piece of property, which perfectly complies with planning and zoning.
Okay. The only issue is if you, you know, motion to table is just strictly motion to table. You really can't add, you know, things to it.
Well, but you can instruct the applicant to bring certain information back. We've done that in the past. Here's, here's why we're tabling it. So this issue gets worked out. And you can instruct the applicant that they go talk to the adjoining property owners that'd be affected by an address change.
Mr. Seidler, would you?
Absolutely.
Okay. Let's get you back up and get that on the record, if you would. Would you be willing to, to do that?
Absolutely.
Okay. And so if we table this, you all would, would meet with the adjoining property owners?
I would go to each individual one. I don't know if there'd be any kind of documentation that I would need to take to have them sign or- or anything like that, but yeah, I would definitely go and talk it over with all of them, yeah.
You'd have to have some, we won't tell you what that, in my opinion, is, don't tell you what that document is. We have to have some verification that those people were actually spoken to.
Or whether that means, you know, getting an attorney to draft something that you could take?
I'm sure a notary probably also, yes.
Right, so, okay. All right, commissioners, with, after hearing that, you know, Chair would entertain a motion, you know, to table, if that's the direction you want to go.
We're still...
Or, we're still open. I mean, if, you know, if you want to move to either approve or deny the docket, that's also, you know, still on the floor. So it's up to the commission. So what would you all like to do? Yes, sir, Mr. Faubert, or well, Dr. Urban, okay?
I move that we table this presented to the discussion that we just had.
Okay. And to a certain time, or just table it?
Just table it.
Okay, all right. We have a motion to table. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, have Mr. Douglas seconds? All right, it's non-debatable, non-amendable, comes to immediate vote. Let me make sure that, well, now, with motion to table, we just need to table. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Okay, this docket, PZ 16035, has been tabled. All right, thank you all. Are you all okay with moving right on into the next docket?
Yes.
He is here? On 034?
Yes.
Okay. Is the commissioners okay with moving right on in, or do we need a break? Good? Everybody good? Okay. All right. Let's move on into the next doctored item, which is docket PZ 16034. Ms. Fox, would you introduce that docket, please?
Docket PZ 16-034. Application has been filed by Robert and Patricia Webb for a residential use waiver to allow resi... Oh, hey, sorry. Residential use in a commercially zoned district is probably located at 6911 Main Street, Westport. The property is Zone C3, General Business District.
All right, thank you. And with that, Ms. Veman, I assume you're introducing the docket?
Hi, I am Brooke Veman, Planner with Oldham County Planning and Development Services. As Ms. Fox stated, the applicant is requesting approval of a waiver for residential use in the C3 zoning district, which pertains to Section 220 permitted uses of the Oldham County zoning ordinance. The property is located at 6911 Main Street in Westport and just under an acre. This is an area view of the property. As you can see, there is, there are no existing buildings on this property that's outlined in blue. The hashed area are the existing drives and the gray structures are existing structures. This is an aerial view. This was taken in 2012. At that time, there was a carport on the rear portion of that property, but it is no longer there. In 2006, a carport, as is stated, was constructed on the lot for the previous owners who lived across the street at 6415 Fourth Street. This carport has since been demolished and the lot is vacant. So 6415 Fourth Street is this property. And at that time, the owners of 6415 owned 6911, so they constructed a carport on that property for their use. The property is Zone C3, General Business District, which no longer lists single-family residential as a permitted use in the zoning ordinance. And as we've discussed through many other cases, our prior zoning ordinance allowed residential homes and uses in commercial districts when we had tiered zoning, which has since been repealed. And you can see in Division 170, C3, General Business District permitted uses and conditional uses does not allow for residential uses. The surrounding properties are a mix of uses, including vacant lots, single-family homes and a post office. The applicant's statement of exceptional hardship states that, given the existing character of the neighborhood, he feels a mixed-use structure with a residential and commercial use is appropriate. So this is the existing zoning in the area. So you can see the existing lot is Zone C3. It is bounded by C3 and then also R2 residential. So this is, and we'll see this on our pictures, on the pictures I'll show you, but that's the existing post office that's located in Westport. There is also a residential use in that building. This is a residential use there, and those were existing at the time that tiered zoning was permitted. So those are what we consider non-conforming or grandfather uses. And then obviously, this is residential and this is also residential as well. This is a vacant lot across the street, and that is, I think, currently just uses open space in the Westport area. This is the future land use map. It does say that the lot will remain commercial, and that's one of the reasons why the applicant is not requesting a zoning change in this area. This is a old survey that was found, and, you know, you can see that their residential use is bounded on each side. The applicant's builder drew in the approximate location of where the mixed-use building will be built. It'll be approximately 103 feet from Main Street and then 65 feet from the alley, which is considered Church Street. And just so you can get an idea of the aerial view, this is Main Street here, and it'll be 103 feet from Main Street, 65 feet from that alley, which is considered Church Street. These are the building elevations that were submitted. You can see it looks like a single-family house. And this is the floor plan, so there's kitchen, cooking facilities, looks like bedroom and plumbing for, you know, a bathroom, but also places for storage as well. So we'll go through the pictures. This is 6911 Main Street. This is looking into the property. This is the next door, the building next door. So really, it's along here, if you can't tell. This is the west view on Main Street. The 6911 is this location. And this is looking towards the river. This is the east view on Main Street. This is, as you all know, the general store, it's existing there. This is the post office, and I'm under the impression that there's also a residential apartment in there. This current structure here is a detached structure that is a part of the existing post office. This is, like I said, the structure that's located at 6915, which is circled in red and is to the right of the site in question, so the adjoining property to the east. And this is the adjoining property owner to the north, which is directly across the street. And that, again, is circled in red on the aerial that's in the corner of your screen. This is the adjoining property that is across the street in the alley. So this Church Street is considered an alley, and that runs along here. So 64, 6415 Fourth Street is this adjoining property. And this is looking east on Church Street, which is the alley that is at the rear of the property. And you're looking back towards Fourth Street. Sorry, that's not there. That should be Fourth Street. And this is the west view on Church Street, looking towards Third Street, so looking towards the river. This is the applicant's property to the right. It's the rear of the property. This is another adjoining property owner, which is 6405 Fourth Street. So you can see, this is Church Street here, which is the alley, and this is Fourth Street. And just another view of 6405 Fourth Street's, the rear, that will actually face the applicant's property, which is right here. And then this is the view from the back of 6911 Main Street. So this is, I'm standing at Church Street, which is the alley looking towards Main Street, which is up here. So in summary, the applicant is requesting a waiver of Section 17020 permitted uses of the Oldham County zoning ordinance for a residential use. And that's all that I have.
All righty, Ms. Veman, thank you. And commissioners, questions for staff? Mr. Horton?
Ms. Veman, the, have there been any other waivers like this granted in Westport, to your knowledge?
Not to my knowledge. As stated before, that we've, we had a tiered zoning system, which allowed a residential use in the commercial zoning districts. So all of, you know, these two are both Zone C3, the same as the applicant's property, and those uses were already in place before we had that change from tiered zoning to what we would consider just separated uses.
So all the grandfathering in, the apartments that are there that are grandfathered in, are those restricted, or are they rentable, or do they have to be owner-occupied? Or is there any restrictions since they were just grandfathered?
There are no restrictions on owner-occupied versus rental.
Okay. And the thing that came up earlier here, I didn't get, I didn't see it completely. The blue and the whatever, what was that delineating, the blue and the pink?
This one?
Yes, uh-huh.
This is the future land use map. It's in your comprehensive zoning ord, or your comprehensive plan. This is what, you know, all the, what the planning commission and the legislative bodies adopted as what is, you know, if you're looking forward in the future, what use or what zoning might be found at this particular location. And it did predict that commercial would remain at this lot, along with the other two lots that are, where residential uses are existing.
Okay, thank you. That's fine, thank you, Ms. Chairman.
All right. Any additional questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, we all move into presentation by the applicant or representative and others in support of the application. Get you to come forward and we'll get your name and address, and then we'll get you sworn in.
My name is Robert Webb, 65, 21 Jacob Drive in Westport.
Okay. And Ms. Fox, if you'll swear amen, please.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Sir, go ahead.
Yeah, I purchased this property four or five years ago, and with the purpose of wanting to put a commercial building on it for my business. Business is mostly online. I don't have any customers normally coming. And I, my idea is to improve the area. I could put a very simple metal structure there and leave it at that, but I live in Westport. I think Westport has a future that is beginning to come forth. And if you look at the elevation of the property that I want to put on there, it's an enhancement to the area. The idea is that I can use this property for my business. I'm an experienced real estate person. I've owned properties in Louisville, residential and commercial properties since I was 30 years old, and I'm a landlord, and so I'm experienced. And the idea is that I could put an apartment above this commercial space, and I can manage it and maybe rent it out to people. It'd be very nice, I think. It's going to be a nice two-bedroom apartment with a lot of room in it, be a bathroom in each bedroom, and I think around 1,600 square feet on that second floor. So probably a little bit more than the area right now can support, but, you know, I'd be pleased to, if somebody came along that would rent it, even at a reduced rate, if I had a good tenant, it would be all right with me. So that's the basics. I'm interested in putting a building on the property that enhances the area and also for the future, for maybe my children who might inherit the place. If you look at the structure itself, it could be if someone in the future decided maybe that they could come to the commission and make it into a residential house, it could be made into a house. If someone in the future decided that they wanted to put in a nice restaurant, the structure could be made into a restaurant. So I think I'm trying to cover a lot of bases, and I think I have a good plan.
Okay. Does that complete your application, sir?
Yeah, I also would like to comment that I think it is within the scope of the area, how the area is being used presently, because we do have commercial and residential mixed use. You have the post office next door. It has residential area in it, and that is a commercial property. Adjacent to that, you have the knock-on-wood store with four, it's a commercial property with four apartments in the rear, and you have where the old general store was across the street, now being used as a woodworking shop. There are a couple of apartments above that. Down the street, there is residential use being used, residential property being used as an attorney's office. So I think that if you look at my plan, it fits.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. We'll have an opportunity for some questions here just shortly. So, all righty.
Do you want to take a seat?
Sure, absolutely, and then we'll call you back up. With that, is there anyone here that would like to speak in support of this application? Okay, seeing none, is there anyone now that would like to testify or have questions opposing this application? Anyone here with testimony or questions opposing? Okay, seeing none, we'll now move into the questioning of the applicant and those opposing the application by the commission. So commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Webb? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Albertson?
What is your street number on Jacob Drive?
6521.
I probably needed to get you back so we can get it on the record.
6521 Jacob Drive.
Thank you.
Okay. Any additional questions for Mr. Webb? Okay. Seeing none, you must have done a good job presenting, sir.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll now move into, let's see, well, we didn't have anybody here opposed. So do you have, Mr. Webb, do you have a final statement that you'd like to make? I just need to get you to come back up, if you would.
No, I don't have any other statement. I think that the project stands on its own feet, and you can tell that I'm a pretty good, serious applicant, and I'll do what I say I'm going to do.
Okay. Thank you very much. And with that, docket PZ 16034 is closed, and I'll call on Mr. Urban and Mr. Carter to outline what's being requested here.
Well, again, it's a very simple request to waive the, it's a waiver to allow residential use in commercially zoned property. And as always, there are motions for either approval or denial. We don't have any particular conditions of approval attached to this as a recommendation.
Okay. Mr. Carter, anything you need to add?
No.
Okay. Commissioners, you've heard the outline on what's being requested on this particular docket. What is the pleasure of the commission? Mr. King?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to move for approval of the waiver as requested. The strict compliance with regulations would create undue hardship like other properties in the immediate vicinity. The uses as proposed are compatible with those nearby properties consisting of both commercial and residential use. And under the unique conditions that exist in the Westport area, that is a commonplace type of arrangement and does not present as the outlier as far as this application is concerned.
Okay. Mr. Carter, is that an adequate motion?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Horton, seconds? All right, any discussion on the motion to approve docket PZ 16034, the residential use waiver? Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask Ms. Fox if she would do the vote on a motion to approve the residential use waiver on docket PZ 16034.
Ms. Albertson?
Yes.
Dr. Urban?
Yes.
Ms. Gonnay? Ms. Conay?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Faubert?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Kleinfus?
Yes.
Mr. Mesker?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
The motion to approve a residential use waiver on docket PZ 16034 has been approved on a vote of 12 to 0. Thank you, Mr. Webb. And with that, Commissioners, we'll take about a five-minute recess here, but we need to be back. And I would suggest that we, you know, go through lunch here because fiscal court is meeting today at 2:00, so we have to be out of here by about 1:30.
It should have been a 13.
Thank you. Let's just.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed.
I think she missed counting.
I did.
Okay. So the vote was 13 to 0. I'm sorry.
That's right.
Okay. All right. With that, we'll take a five-minute recess to get reset for our next docket, and we'll need to work through lunch to meet our schedule here on getting done.